We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, the one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. With liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, we have a plaque, and I guess since I'm the mayor, I get the honor of presenting it to Dave. Thank you, Dave. Now, we are going to move right into Resolution 2023-30, which is officially retiring Dave's badge number. So, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-30. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds like five zero to me.
Thank you very much.
You've earned it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for all your years of service.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Dave. But we'll still be hanging on together.
Thank you all.
Thank you. It's fun. Enjoy.
You bet. Last council members will ever go to a meeting and they'll never go to a benefit.
Well, with that, has anyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Is there any changes or additions?
I do not have any.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
All right. Attached are the minutes from our last council meeting, November 27th. We also have the receivables and the payables. And I will tell the council this, tonight is our last meeting of the year, but we will still send another batch of payables out in a couple of weeks to see until that.
And then the slot routine in April?
We'll hold.
And then in January, we're starting with one meeting a month?
We're going to try one meeting a month, beginning in January, the second Monday.
Yep.
Jim, you will not be here.
I will not.
Okay.
That's the eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will not.
Ron, you're a faithful attender. You got that? We're going to try dropping to one meeting a month for a while.
I got it.
See if I can come up to my house if you want to pay me twice a month.
Anything to add? I guess the bills are kind of routine. There's some training in there for some employees. There is an EDA grant that was paid from last summer's program. I think that's about all I.
That was the grant finishing up on Bev Elke's building?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Very nice. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Anyone here to speak through public forum tonight? No one at this time? No, it's Communications. See, we got a little Christmas card and booklet from Bolton and Mink.
Yep, that's all I have for you.
Everybody got it, yeah? Sure, that's well worth the money we spent with them this year. Council reports.
I don't have anything from the Gulf Advisory Board, and we'll be touching on staffing and personnel policy stuff here in a minute, so.
Ivan, you want to cover EDA, or?
I wasn't there. I have no idea what to do.
That's right, you were sick.
Yeah.
Well, EDA met last week, and Randy led the meeting for the first time. Went excellent. He did a great job. Like we just mentioned in the payables, we had one of them storefront grants that was paid out. Uh, we discussed, uh, doing another type of survey and how we're going to do it. We got a example on one that Elysian put out. Basically, our general consensus was try to keep it short and simple. You might get better, better results out of it. So, we, Randy's got our old one and the one from Elysian. He's going to try to put something together before the next meeting, and we'll take a look at that if he gets to it. So, we're looking at doing another survey. It's a survey in the town of kind of their thoughts on what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Our, our last survey was completed at the end of 2020.
Okay.
So, it's been a few years.
It, it slipped my mind earlier, but with the goose changing, purple goose changing ownership, we had a loan to them through EDA.
We did not have a loan to them, not to Judy.
Wasn't that a storefront?
They had got some grants in the past, but not, there's one loan out there, but it isn't technically purple goose.
I misunderstood.
So, we didn't receive anything out of that.
Right, thanks.
I, I did have a question that popped in my head today. I, it's my understanding that part of that Lampert property has been sold off. Is, is that correct?
That is correct.
There would have been holdings on that from the EDA, so there should have been an amount deposited back to the city when that was.
Well, we, I mean, we don't like technically take a mortgage against it or anything like that, so. I mean, the, the loan is basically a good faith loan to Johnson for the business, and we did not require anything for the portion they sold. And they did actually pay back a pretty good chunk when they sold their other building.
Right, right. But that, that was the amount that was owed on that other property?
It was, but we did actually short them.
Right.
Their second loan because they owed on the first one, so. They're actually down there. That should have been, what, eighteen thousand? They should be down there in the sixty, sixty-one thousand dollar range on it, so. This is getting off my head. I don't know exactly, but. And I had a utility meeting tonight, but Andrea's here, and she's going to cover that with Department Head. She does a way better job than I do. Jimmy, you got anything? Sarah? No? Okay. Administrator report. Clinton?
All right. Let me get to the first page. Okay, you have the November reconciliation from the bank, as well as the cash balance report with the graphs, the golf course yearly comparisons. I was going to talk for a minute here about the deputy city clerk position. We had discussed recruiting for a deputy clerk after Andrea has now become, you know, the utility general manager. So, Sarah, Andrea, and I, we've been putting the job description together. I think we'll look at it one more time, maybe tomorrow or Wednesday, and then we'll, then we'll start sending advertisements out for that position. And I attached the job description in your packet tonight. Golf course membership drive will be next week, December 20th through 23rd, and you have the $2,024 prices in your packet.
They are up a little bit in prices?
Yeah.
That's what I thought I'd.
Thought it's got the three point something, three point five?
It could be.
Percent?
Three to four percent.
That's pretty minimal.
The second half property taxes came in from the county, so we got a little over $600,000, and that would be the second half taxes that goes into our funds. Put an article in here about the Wasika County jail, and I think tomorrow, they're looking at public comment tomorrow. Yep. So, that's a pretty good article. Just talks about the aging facility and, you know, what needs to be done with it, or the options that they have. And then my last item I had here for you is our holiday hours, as you know. December 24th, Christmas Eve, we close at noon that day. So, we will be closing on Friday, December 22nd at noon, and then, of course, Monday, the 25th is the holiday, so we will be closed on Monday as well. Any questions?
Motion to approve Administrator report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old Business Number One.
Department Head.
Oh, yeah, all right. We'll do Department Head. I just was bragging you up, and then I was going to skip you.
You skipped her.
Um, a couple of things. Um, tonight's meeting, we did approve the 2024 electric and water budget, so those are final. There will be a six percent increase for rates for the electric fund. Water, there was no rate increase. Currently, we have bids out there for a new transformer. We're going to be opening bids on the 21st of this month, so hopefully we get some competitive bids there. We completed our AMI electric meter swap outs last month, so that whole process is done, so now all electric and water meters are installed. There's a handful of electric that didn't work properly, so we had to send those back, so we are reading still a few with the handheld yet, but it's not a big deal. We can get through that. The next stage, we will be working on rolling out that customer portal, looking to come out in springtime with that, so. Kind of all that I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
That's quite impressive to get that task for both of those meters done in the amount of time that they, they had, or they did.
Yeah, though, well, the water meters got done last year.
Yes, but still only about a year and a half, two years, whole project, both of them, correct?
Yeah. Yep. And it took longer than anticipated because of the supply chain with electric meters.
Very commendable.
Will there be like an app, do you know, for that portal?
Yes. Yeah. I think you'll be able to access it, like on your phone, tablet, computer.
Gotcha. And you're looking at that for springtime, Ron?
Oh, no, no.
Yes.
I would recommend having a full staff, because I can see call increase, call volume increasing here, why people are trying to turn that.
So, with that, with the vendor that we're going with, there will be, I believe we'll hold meetings too, so customers can come down here and kind of get a more hands-on of what it's going to look like, how to use it, so it's not just going to be here you go type of product, so.
Well, hopefully we have a fully staffed office by then. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Old Business Number One, the final.
Yes, tonight is our budget presentation for the general fund budget and the rest of the city budget. You have three items in your packet. One is the general fund budget, and then the second packet are the utility sanitary storm and golf. And then your third packet is the presentation that we do every year. I was just going to generally say that our tax levy increase was 3.2% over last year. Last fall, we were at about 8.4%, I want to say, so that's very good that we're able to make a few more cuts here throughout the fall months, and we got that to 3.2% increase. Randy and I were looking at this today and pointed out that the 3.2% increase is the smallest increase we've had in 10 years. So, compliments to staff. Thank, thank them for helping and working with me on it. They did a great job. If I can just give a quick little summary here, our revenues, I have the pie chart up there. Twenty-five percent of our revenues for the general fund comes directly through the property taxes, and forty percent comes from local government aid. So, if you look at those two items right there, sixty-five percent of our revenues come from property taxes and that local government aid. As you remember, local government aid increased quite a bit this year, so that's good for us, right? On the expenses, I think are pretty, pretty straightforward. Basically, your general fund has public works, public safety, city hall, and then in our case, we also have a cemetery and a library, so that's what the expenses come from. You'll see the public works is about 27% of our expenses. City Hall is 24%. Public safety, which includes police and fire, is 37%. So, those are pretty much right on track with what we have had historically, so that's a good thing. And finally, I was just going to mention that we have our resolution to adopt the tax levy. The resolution is in a few parts. One is its debt service for our past street projects, and then there's some storm sewer levy from previous projects. Then we also put money into reserves each year for various departments for equipment. And then there's also some EDA levy that goes to the EDA fund for those storefront grant programs and things like that. So, the total property tax levy is $1,234,027. And one of the biggest requirements when we have our budget presentation is that we have to ask the public if they have any questions, so. Public, do you have any questions? Like I said, we're looking at a 3.2% increase, which is very reasonable. So, tonight I would ask for two motions. One, to approve the entire city budget, and then the other motion would be to adopt, pass this resolution approving that tax levy. And then what I'll do tomorrow is I'll send the information to the county, and then there's a one-page report that we have to send to the Department of Revenue. I will do that tomorrow morning as well.
What resolution are we trying?
Yeah.
First resolution is collection of taxes, 2023-31. That one for the.
Sure can do that one.
Yep.
2023-31, I would move for adoption, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
What is the other one? Approved.
Approved the budget, yep.
I would move also the adoption of the budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thanks to Clinton and the entire staff. They did a wonderful job on this budget.
Thank you.
Very happy to see a 3.2%. We had a big increase last year, and very nice to see.
What was our proposal in December?
It was like eight, eight point nine.
Have you seen some of the budgets, Banquetal and North Banquetal and some of them? Eight, nine, and more, so.
They were under us last year.
Yes, I understand, but I'm saying that, anyway.
Old Business Number Two is finishing up this personnel policy stuff.
Yeah, the Personnel Committee has made, you know, quite a few times, looking at the personnel policy over the last year or so. I just want to give kind of a quick update as to what we're doing here. Right around the time of the COVID months, I started working on the personnel policy with the committee, and then I realized that with last year's legislative session, there is going to be a lot of changes, so basically, we waited until this legislative session was over. What you have, what I have given you, I should say, is the personnel policy itself. All the items in yellow would be the changes that reflect these laws, and I also want to say that 99.9% of any changes came directly from the league. The league has different templates, you know, for the different policies and things like that, so we're able to use that. In your packet tonight, there is one new law that goes into effect January 1st. It's the Earned Sick and Safe Leave, and just as late as last week, Andrea and I were getting some more information on it. This is what we have right now, and basically now, we just have to make sure we can work with Banyan to make sure it, it works right with our payroll system. But if anybody has any questions on the policy in general, um.
Will there be an increase to accruals, or do they, is the current one already received this?
The current one does.
So, the only, the only change is the 80 hours?
Yep.
Same as ours now?
Yep. And just in a nutshell, Earned Safe and Sick Leave is a benefit, when they passed the law, it was, it's a benefit for part-time or seasonal employees, you know, because generally, a full-time employee gets sick leave or personal leave, but a lot of times part-timers don't, so this gives that opportunity, this benefit to them. Yep.
As well as the volunteer fire department?
Yeah. Andy, Andy, do you guys have anything to add?
I've looked at that thing 15 times. I'd like to pull that out. I'm real sick of it, so. If we, if we can put it behind us, I think it's, it's a good thing to do, as long as, I guess, the staff is all happy with it. They're the ones that really directly affects.
I agree with.
And I know that everybody, all the staff has had the opportunity to look at it if they wanted to, so.
I agree with Andy. You can read this thing 10, 15 times, and I don't get anything more out of it. I just, I have to rely on the professionals and the individuals that it impacts, and if they don't have any objections, neither do I. So, I would move that we adopt this.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three is police department staffing. We do have Chief Johnson here tonight. We had a meeting with him the other day, obviously with him, Dave retiring and him moving to the chief position, it still leaves us one short. I believe, has the ad up and going yet? Steve? Okay. We are, of course, advertising for a full-time police officer, and you can come on up, Steve. You can kind of tell us. Steve was going to put the ad on the post board for us, which is extremely competitive right now.
Put the, uh, full-time ad on the post board Friday, and then got it up on the Minnesota cities today.
Yep.
And still haven't done the part-time one yet. Still waiting on that. I did do a wage study. I don't know if I'm jumping the gun here.
No, that's. Yeah, I can get on that real quick for you. With all of our, what did, what did we call that? We did, uh, then we updated everybody's pay and.
Oh, the wage study?
The wage study did not include any part-time help. And our part-time police officers are way underpaid, which makes it very hard for us to get them. So, we actually directed Steve to maybe check around a little bit at some of the local towns, see what they were offering.
I was able to, I talked about five different departments. Wasika doesn't have part-time. They haven't since 2015, and when they did last, it was in the $20 an hour range, eight years ago, almost nine. Wells PD is at $20.50 an hour, and they're going up. They've had it posted for over three months and not a single application. Mad Lake doesn't have any, and if they did, it would, pay would be 25. They can't get anybody either. Waterville PD will be at 2608, and they've had openings for three years, full-time and part-time, so they can't get any. And then, Lasura PD has a regular, full, full-year-long part-time at $32 an hour, and they have a seasonal, which is a six-month maximum at $43 an hour. So, that's, that's the ones that I was able to get openings on.
Okay.
How, how many hours are part-time?
They're, by statute, part-time license is restricted to 1040, so half-time. If it's a full-time licensed officer, they can work as many as needed, so. Right now, Santo is working almost half the way, half the shifts at night. That's not a long-term solution.
But, but Mike Santo is only a part-time officer.
He's only, he's restricted to 1040.
Yep. And as I mentioned here in my memo, the first step, step one on the pay scale for police officers is $34.47 an hour. The suggestion was brought up, you know, should we advertise at that step one for part-time?
What is part-time, what is step one?
$34.47 an hour.
That's our full-time step one. That's our full-time step one. That's just kind of where we thought we should start the pay. Some of this may be a little tricky for Steve. He's walking into a budget that he didn't completely set himself, and, but we are, we do not have a, we got an open full-time position right now, so we're saving on that, but hopefully we're going to be able to put it out into some part-time. We'll see when we get a full-time.
And I think that the flip side of that is that if we, if we did hire at that $34.47, that's better than paying overtime.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, we're saving on that side of the.
So, are you, Clinton, are we looking for action to approve that $34 so that you can advertise that on the board?
If you can do that, we can get the advertisements rolling tomorrow morning.
Absolutely, you can, yes. That's going to have to be. We can't start ones at it and then leave, leave ones that are, been faithful to us in the, in the, now they're all going to have to get it.
Maybe we say effective. In your motion, make the effective date as well, please.
Okay. Effective. Well, when does a pay period change here? Should we make it effective with a pay period? Would that be easier for you?
It'd be next week. Now, the next pay period starts next Sunday.
Okay, well, then I would make this, I would make a motion to start, to start part-time police officers at step one of our pay grade, effective December 17th, 2023. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
One other item, or, go ahead. Thank you. Yeah. One other item we do need to talk about tonight is the sergeant position.
Yep.
And I did check with Jason Moran on this. He did get back to me. If we were to post internally here in the building, we could look for a possible internal officer to become sergeant. I would suggest we do that, and then the Personnel Committee maybe want to get together once that.
Yep.
Timeline is here?
Yep.
Okay. Should we post for a week?
Sure. And we're posting internally. The memo should be able to get out very quickly.
Remind me again why the sergeant position is, I, I forget what the discussion was when we implemented it.
Basically, to have a second in charge.
So, it'd be like a, like a, a.
Deputy.
Chief deputy, almost like the.
Yeah, yeah.
The county has chief deputy. The sergeant would be in charge when the chief is not available.
Correct.
That's what we're looking at.
Yep. Establishment acting order, basically. Anything to add on that, Steve?
I think, I think it's necessary. I think it's, it clears a lot of things up.
Okay. So, we will post starting, we can probably work on it tomorrow. We're going to tomorrow. We'll post it until the, post it until, I don't know, just want to do the 17th or 18th?
Sure.
Application to the 18th.
We'll use the same policy from last time.
Yep, yep.
Same qualification.
Same, yep, same everything. Okay. That'll run then through, when you guys get it up through the 18th, and then we'll look at getting the committee together after that.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Anything else for Steve while he's up there? Let, let, put him right on the spot here. He's new to this, so. Ah, he looks like he's doing all right.
Taking on a hot hand.
Looks like you're doing all right.
Not exactly a rookie.
Thanks, Steve. New Business Number One, liquor license for Agave Grove at 121 North Main.
So, an agave is a plant, and the fermented sugar. So, an agave is a plant, and the fermented sugar, OJ and I looked this up today, the fermented sugar is what's used to make kikila.
Okay, I do have one quick correction for you there, though. I believe it went from OJ to CJ.
No, it's gonna stay OJ.
I'm pretty sure it went to CJ, I've seen it on Facebook.
No.
So, CJ did a background check.
Okay.
We recommend that you approve the liquor license for Agave Grove. We will make sure everything, you know, gets back from the state like we normally do, and we should be good then.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I actually said that wrong, but Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two is our funds transfer, which we're gonna move into right now.
Yes, so on the screen is the, is the resolution that Andy is talking about here. We have four transfers to make, these are budgeted transfers that we do every year, that go into the appropriate funds that's labeled here.
Okay, now I have a motion for.
Sarah?
What's that? Now I have a motion for twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, transfer fund balances.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New Business Number Three will be the board's appointments for next year.
Applications were through Wednesday, December sixth, and every board did have an applicant come, or some were interested in serving another term. So, the list you have in front of you tonight would be the new board members effective January first for these respective boards and commissions.
So, Mike Dan, that's, he's new to that, or is he? Mike Danbury is new to the EDA, Ken Benson is new to Whispering Creek, and everyone else basically remain the same.
Is there a reason there are disparities in terms?
So that they're, they're all offset.
Okay.
So, we have one going off every year. Any questions on the appointments?
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we do our appointments the first.
First meeting, yep. Yep. Before we adjourn tonight, I just wanna say happy holidays to everybody, spend a good year.
Thank you, Clinton, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought the holiday thing was a. A smashing success, I would say. Yeah, that was, that was.
Terrific.
That's great.
It was terrific, yeah, it was a, I was gonna say three thousand. I was comparing pictures to pictures that we take at heydays when we have a fairly good count at how many we have in the tent. So, I was trying to compare pictures, and I'm gonna say real close to three thousand, I mean, that's like an educated guess, but. Quite a few, it was an excellent turnout. Will you adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we are adjourned.